I want to welcome you to our La Sure City Council meeting dated August twenty five, two thousand twenty five. At this time, we call the meeting to order and we'll begin with a flag of allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, it's appropriate at this time, I'd just like to take a couple of moments to recognize Officer Carl Hogan. It's with heavy hearts that we show the passing of a friend, Ali, longtime police officer Carl Hogan, who died Monday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty five, at his home. Officer Hogan faithfully served the La Sure and Henderson communities since two thousand eight, contributing both part-time and full-time capacities here for the city of La Sure during that time. He was a vital part of the department here, great friend, and we sincerely miss. Carl leaves behind his wife, Morgan Hogan, and children, Griffin, Rory, and Teddy. Celebration of life will be held at two P M. this coming Sunday, August thirty first, at First Evangelical Lutheran Church in Kenton.
Thank you, Mr. Robbie. With that said, at this time, I would like to offer up a long silence for Officer Hogan and keep his family. And may Carl's soul rest in peace. Thank you. First, order of business tonight will be the approval of tonight's agenda. With that said, I will entertain a motion to do so. Williams, seconded, you have a discussion, comments, concerns, if not all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have. We've got on presentations, Mr. Roby, do you want to introduce our first presentation?
I would thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you recall from previous years, M N P A is the municipal power agency of which the city of La Sure is a member, and from whom we purchase all of our wholesale power. Annual meeting last year, twenty twenty four, the annual meeting was held here in La Sure, and several council members were able to attend. New recruitment serves as one to two representatives from the city of La Sure on the M N P A board, and we've asked Mr. Crewman to come tonight to present a summary of the M N P A annual meeting.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, those in the audience, we're going to give you a quick overview of M N P A at the twenty five, twenty five, twenty twenty five annual meeting. It was looking at twenty twenty four. As you can see here on the screen, we have twelve members now in this group. We actually are technically an agency of the state, Minnesota Municipal Power Agency. We were in this from the very beginning. Joe, go ahead, please. Okay, you can see up above, in nineteen ninety two, this organization began. We began operations in nineteen ninety five. We have been a member ever since, and then you look down the list, you can see some of the progress that's been made. As of twenty twenty two, members extended our contracts to twenty sixty, this council approved that, and we are now members through the year twenty sixty. The reason we go that far ahead is, in order to get bonding and to do other things for your finances, you have to show how many members you have and how long they're going to be a member of the agency. And notice in twenty twenty four, we are at forty eight percent renewable energy. Joe, if you would, please. The mission is very simple, it's to be, provide reliable power that's competitively priced. Within the last, I'd say about ten years, we added to create value for an M N P A and its members. We'll go to the next slide. We have two sources of energy, natural gas, which is for reliability. We have Minnesota River Station, which is in Chaka, or excuse me, Chaska. The Faribault Energy Park, which is our main source of gas power energy, which is in Faribault. And the Chaka P Energy Park, which is, of course, in Chaka P. On the other side over here, we have renewable, the Oak Glen Wind Farm, which is owned by M N P A. Hometown Bioenergy here in La Sure, owned by M N P A. And then we have other solar fruit entities, Black Oak and Buffalo and Walleye, where we have contracts for long-term provision, that they provide the power, and we have a purchasing agreement with each of them, but we do not own those facilities. This is Faribault Energy Park, we're currently at three hundred megawatts. I'll keep going, Chaka P, you can see, is forty six, and the Minnesota River Station is technically now owned by Chaska, but we're working on having M N P A become the owner. And these are the wind-powered, as you can see here on the screen, I'll keep going, Joe. Hometown Bioenergy has eight megawatts potential for providing electricity. However, you'll see later that we're not producing very much electricity there now. We're producing a product called renewable natural gas, which is essentially natural gas. And we're selling that on the market at a much better profit than we make making electricity. So that benefits our community, keeps our rates low for provision of electricity. And then you have Buffalo Solar, you can see how much it takes to have a solar array just to produce seven megawatts, it takes quite a bit. Okay. Operationally, our plant performance in that year was the highest we've ever had. You can see F V P is Faribault Energy Park at ninety four percent reliable availability. Minnesota River Station, ninety four point nine. Chaka P Energy Park, ninety nine point nine, and Oak Glen Wind Farm, ninety eight point seven. We've had good and low environmental compliance costs, which is very important, and no major environmental violations. We'll move on. And again, you can quickly look at this and see, you can obviously see that Faribault is our main place to produce electricity. But Walleye Wind is producing a lot for us, it's a relatively new, probably about three years in our portfolio. And then Hometown Bio, you can see a small figure on the bottom, because we weren't producing very much electricity, because we were switching to renewable natural gas. Okay, Joe? Financially, our net income last year was twenty three million. Let me simply say parenthetically, that sounds like a lot. When you start trying to install things like transformers, upgrading equipment, having that kind of money in reserve doesn't go very far. This is a very expensive type of operation. Our cash did increase by eleven million and received four point two, and we're called investment tax credits. That was for Hometown Bio Renewable Energy. Okay. So, from twenty eight, twenty thousand, two zero zero eight, till twenty twenty four, we experienced growth, generation, income, and balance sheet. These are all things we'll talk about real quickly. Joe, go ahead. You can see the number of members increased by one, we picked up Elk River. The amount of electricity produced, often called the loan, went up substantially from one point three to one point nine million megawatt hours, okay? Total generation, you can see again, went up almost three times from seven, well, seven fifty to two zero five zero, and renewable went up substantially from point three percent to forty seven point nine. Go ahead, Joe. Our revenues, of course, consequently also went up, and our net income went up, as I reported earlier, twenty three million last year. This is the amount of balance sheet money that we have on board, cash, total assets, long-term debt. Again, notice that the debt is going down, we're trying to reduce the amount that we owe, put the money into cash reserves so that we can do projects in the future. Okay? Real quickly, I'm not going to get into any detail on this chart, but you can see the gray area is non-carbon-free. Based on the requirements in the state of Minnesota, target dates of twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, twenty forty, we need to have less carbon-type energy and more of it, obviously, we commonly call green energy, and that's what we're working toward, we have a plan, your M N P A has a plan, to meet the requirements for the state of Minnesota by all of those target dates. Okay, Joe? We have committed additions to our portfolio for Benton Solar, Upriver Solar, and a Faribault Energy Park upgrade, which will substantially increase the amount of energy we can produce there. And then the Manitoba Hydro Capacity Exchange is nothing more than, if it's summer, we can get energy from them. In the winter, they can get energy from us as BP. Move on. Benton Solar, you can see a quick summary there, can provide ten percent of our energy needs, next, please. Elk River accrues only twenty five percent of our energy needs, and we may get a tax credit eligibility. A lot of that's in flux right now with what's happening with the government. Okay? Faribault Energy, we have been increasing substantially what we're able to do every year. Again, this is owned by us, and it's been in service, that's not correct, and will be in service in twenty twenty nine. Okay, move on. The hydro exchange, again, produces, eventually, we'd have twenty percent of our total capacity if we need it, so we can have summer energy, which is our peak time, and winter, they would get it from us, which is a peak time for Manitoba, okay? Remaining solar needs, we're working on a project in Livonia and Nolan called Bell Solar. Now we have two hundred and thirty megawatts unidentified. Let me simply explain, if that could happen here, it may not, we don't know. What happens is, we have people out there working for M N P A, looking for sites for solar. Some might be here, they might not be, but so far, they have been unidentified. Battery storage needs, as we have higher need to have green energy, we have to have some kind of storage, so we're looking to include fifty megawatts by twenty thirty, okay? Elk River is another project, you may be familiar with the fact that there's a large waste management to landfill there, and what we're doing is, we're going to convert that methane that's produced there into energy. It will be sold as transportation fuel, and eventually, it will produce electric generation for us by twenty forty. We'll have a few more slides on that in just a minute. The development started in quarter four of twenty twenty one, notice how long these take. The agreement was signed in twenty twenty two, and we started construction last year in quarter four. That was a very minimal start, but it was a start, and we're hoping to get all, we call it the T's crossed, the I's dotted, to be able to get all the permits that are required to be able to pull this off. Let's move on, please. So the schedule is, now we're permitting for land use, construction permits. We have on the bottom, that we think will be operational by quarter one of twenty twenty seven. This is the location, I'm not going to dwell, I keep going, there you go, you'll see it again. And here's what the plant would look like, okay, moving on. Member support. We, as a M N P A, provide support to our communities. We've had two thousand students who've gone through a program about electric energy. We've done two thousand, twenty-five thousand students since twenty twelve. We have clean energy choice here in our community, both for residential and business. And overall, for M N P A, you can see the percentages that participate. People pay a little extra to know that they're getting clean, or excuse me, they get green energy, okay? Financing, I think we'll skip this slide, it's up to say, don't go back, Joe, just, we have very high ratings with Moody's and Fish. You'd have to know more about them, what's an A, A three, and A, A minus, but believe me, they're very good. Okay. Conclusion. We've had a great year last year with competitive rates and good profits. I can tell you this, I think every meeting we have of M N P A, we meet monthly, and your representatives, I'm one of them, and the other is Foster, transferred. He is considered to be the alternate representative, but generally, we both attend meetings. We are competitive with Excel, that's the one we use as a measure. We're consistently under the rate that Excel would charge for providing electricity. We're prepared to meet the future, we're prepared to meet our carbon-free obligations. Notice, we're now at forty eight percent, and we'll be sixty percent carbon-free by twenty thirty, and we've kept our rate increases at or below inflation, and that will be the case for next year. So as you all set rates for next year, you'll be able to keep the rates set at either at or below inflation for twenty twenty six. I think that's it, Joe, is it? That's it? I went through that very quickly. I told Foster, who's sitting in the back, if you have any questions, just ask him. But you can also ask me, so. I'm honored to serve as your representative. It's a really interesting role, because everything we do at those meetings has proprietary interest, so everything is considered confidential. So I can't even tell Joe sometimes what's going on there, but we find ways to get permission to tell him things, to tell staff things that we need to. But that's because we're dealing with big business, and it's a lot of competition out there. There's competition for parts, there's competition for where we're going to have various locations, for example, for solar. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, Joe, but I know you've got a tight agenda, so if anybody does, I'll answer them, if not, you can get in, follow me individually.
Thank you, Mr. Crewmanella, thank you for your participation on the board, it's been doing a long time, and you can take back to the board that this community appreciates partnership with M N P A and its community members. Thank you for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it?
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item four B, that'd be the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, Mr. Roby, you want to introduce?
I would thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll fly before right now, Aaron Johnson with Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, locally known as Smith. Earlier tonight, so I think last year, Smith stopped by a council meeting to talk about some of the work that they do in our community, but also in surrounding communities, and with that, I'll just.
All right, thank you so much, thanks for having me, I'm honored to be here. I am the philanthropy director at Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. I was born and raised in St. Peter and live there currently, so La Sure feels like home to me, I played for the Bulldogs one year. So anyway, I'm just here to present a quick overview of what we do and our most recent work here in the community. If they answer any questions, so diving in, Smith is a donor-supported foundation, invests for economic growth in the twenty counties of south-central and southeastern Minnesota. This includes a hundred and seventy-five communities and one native nation, our key interests are entrepreneurship, early childhood development, and community vitality. So far, Smith has invested a hundred and seventy million dollars in the region since nineteen eighty-six, when we began. Diving in entrepreneurship, our goal here, first and foremost, is to make sure entrepreneurs in our region have the resources they need to support and thrive. We do this first and foremost through gap lending. As a gap letter, we work in partnership with other organizations to meet the entrepreneur's needs, we can help those just starting out, all the way up to equity investments. One of the great benefits of partnering with the foundation on a loan package is that even if we are a small part, we can provide one-on-one technical assistance tailored to individuals' needs. We're also programming in this area, such as the prosperity initiative. This serves traditionally entrepreneurs from backgrounds that have a little bit more difficulty entering into the field of business. For example, veterans, people below the federal poverty threshold, and so on. Basically, we provide twelve months of one-on-one coaching tailored to that individual. Also, Red, which I know La Sure is a member of, entrepreneurial venture ship program. This is a program where we, obviously, you guys are familiar, but building from the ground up, instead of the traditional model, taking people from outside the community and bringing them in, so that's something we're very proud of, and you guys are doing fantastic work here. Moving on to early childhood, our goal here is to make sure that all children are ready to learn by age three. It is statistically shown that if they aren't, it's very hard to catch up, so we want everyone to have a chance to be a successful member of our communities. We're also in the middle of the nationwide childcare shortage, as I'm sure all of you are aware. This means that not all of our kids have a place to go in quality care, also, this starts to affect parents, having to stay, leave the workforce and stay home. So we tackle this. We provide free, developed-approved trainings, both virtually and in person. Developed-approved simply means that they receive their needed continuing education credits by attending, and these are childcare providers. So we serve around a thousand annually this way. We also have a consultant who will come into the community and work with you, as you examine your shortage needs and develop a plan. This is, this person can be accessed on our website, and it's free of charge, and I can connect you with that individual as well. Finally, we provide grants in this area, for example, an early care and education grant. This supports children with social, emotional, and physical support needs, also mental. Many times, this translates into additional trainings for providers and professionals, pretty much anyone that works with children. We also give out around thirty thousand books a year through our partnership with Capstone and Abdo Publishers out of Menkato. This is for children to keep and create their own memories. Lastly, our community vitality work. So this is focused on our smaller communities, typically with populations under ten thousand. We have the Small Town Grant Program, which is just wrapping up, actually, it is wrapped up now, but this is something that is focused on creating a culture of collaboration and belonging. Also, the Paint the Town Program, promoting community beautification, volunteerism and engagement. We provide the paint for murals, historic structures, and public art. Community comes around and does something spectacular with the paint. Finally, our affiliate fund program, under which we have a hundred and forty-seven funds, we are the fiscal host, five-one C three hosts. Of those funds, thirty-three now are community foundations. We feel a community foundation is an essential element for keeping small towns vibrant. Of course, La Sure has a community foundation. And so, this is just to keep wealth local, keep it here. As you're aware, we're in the middle of one of the greatest transfers of wealth. That conversation is becoming increasingly more relevant everywhere I go, and my colleagues go as well. So, community foundations are a way to tap into the potential for future philanthropic efforts. I just want to dive in here and give you some specifics, in your folder, you will see our county fact sheet right here. La Sure County Fact Sheet, so for every dollar that is donated to the foundation for La Sure County, twenty-one dollars is invested back into La Sure County communities through our grants, loans, and programming. Thirty loans have been supporting entrepreneurs to date, three hundred and eight grants have been issued to support community projects, and a total of six and a half million has been invested by Smith in La Sure County through our grants, loans, and programming. If you flip that page over, you'll see examples. Many of you already have it flipped over, you'll see some examples, there are core areas of spotlight, so early childhood spotlight, and so on, and I'll kind of let you look at those. I'll give some specific examples here in just a moment. To date, three thousand three hundred and seventy children have been supported, seventy entrepreneurs have been supported, and we're very proud to see that impact here. Kind of wrapping up, I just wanted to give you the most recent work specifically in La Sure. So our early literacy grant was awarded to La Sure Henderson Pre-School and E C F B. We awarded two hundred and fifty English books, provided books to children zero ages, birth through eight. This was issued to help families who found a fourth book, so you could read to their children at the beginning of their libraries, that was about a five thousand dollar value. Also, La Sure Henderson, same grant, that one was in twenty twenty-three, this one is in twenty twenty-four, awarded a hundred dollars, a hundred English and twenty Spanish books for the same reason. Again, just this year, the early literacy grant to the La Sure Henderson Public School, E C F B, two hundred English books, twenty-five Spanish books as well. Regarding our early childcare regional training sessions, total within the years twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four combined, a hundred and eighty attended, actually, from this county. We serve, we have nearly a thousand attendees to these events every year, as we put on around thirty-one early childhood training sessions. So that's a great number, and we hope that that impact is being felt here in the community as well. Also, I'll just say that I'll just kind of give you an idea of the total amount of funding that is coming into the community. So, to date, in the last three years, so from twenty twenty-three really to twenty twenty-five, here in the county, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars has been invested back. We want to thank you for your long term, you guys have partnered with us in so many ways, and we've together made meaningful change and an impact in our community, here in La Sure and elsewhere. In the past, you guys have contributed to our development fund, and I believe twenty eighteen, you guys were contributing at the twenty-five hundred dollar level. What our ask is, just that you will keep us in mind for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, as you're forming that budget, so. That's all I have, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and I want to thank you for your work for this foundation, I appreciate hearing from you, I think you were here last year, were you not?
I believe I met, I don't know if I was actually presenting, but I think I met with some of our committee members, yep.
Well, you offer tremendous resource for our community, not only our community, but our surrounding community, so thank you for being here, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Moving on to the consent agenda, consent agenda is considered normal routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. These items will only act in one launch, there'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which the item will be removed from the agenda and considered a normal sequence. With that said, I would ask Mr. Roby to review these couple of items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two items on tonight's consent agenda, the first is approval of city council minutes from the regular meeting of August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Second is dispersments through today, included in those dispersments are items over twenty-five thousand dollars. The first, DeBolde Make, for their work on the twenty twenty-five street utility improvements project, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars and ten cents. Next to the Minnesota Department of Revenue, the July twenty twenty-five city sales tax, sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. Next, Brownley Excavating, the work on the design church utility improvements project, dedication number one, forty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and two cents. And finally, to waste management, the rescue services for July twenty-five, twenty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-six cents.
Thank you, Mr. Roby, anybody have any questions regarding these two items? Not? Except the motion that passes the late consent agenda. So, I have council member Sullivan, secondly, a council member Schleter. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, if not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have. We are on the public comment, do we have anybody who'd like to? Public comment provides an opportunity for public regrets, council items that are not on the agenda, tonight's agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person, persons wishing may comment or sign up in advance of the meeting. On the sheet, providing identify themselves by writing their names and address. With that said, I have two people on there. Okay. Got it. And Jerry, Denver, you're here, did you want to share anything tonight, or were you just here for a?
I'd like to talk about the housing project.
Thank you, okay, do you want to weigh a little bit on that, or you can? And then Barry Cale, did you have anything you want to share?
I was with the high school project group.
Okay, very good. We'll have an opportunity to address that in a little bit, then. Then we will move ahead with the regular agenda. I'm sorry, city administrator update, I'm trying to teach out of that.
That's okay, I'll make it briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder to everyone who hasn't signed up for Smart Home already, please do it until everyone's signed up, I will continue to mention it. Last week, we had planning commission meeting with two, with public hearings associated with Park Elementary redevelopment and the Oak Terrace Commissioner's Use Permit. Personnel Budget Committee met today to discuss the twenty twenty-six general fund budget and levy, there will be another Personnel Budget Committee meeting likely next week. We do not know the date and time yet, but we'll get that posted as soon as we find the time that we can meet. We'll be kicking out negotiations for our public works and facilities unit of the I U O E Local Forty-Nine tomorrow. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the Veterans Memorial Task Force, the Veterans Memorial. As most council knows, the, our local veterans have been very involved in a, in moving and revamping the existing Veterans Memorial at American Legion Park. Push on fundraisers right now, as they work to get to the point where they can actually move the memorial and build up around it. We'll be having a meeting with the city of Henderson regarding the wastewater cost share agreements, starting the week of September first. One of best wishes and a message of stay safe to all students, teachers, staff, and local schools, and just a pleasant reminder to everyone that it is twenty-five miles an hour during school hours, during school drop-off, and so picking up on Perry Street, and forty miles an hour all other hours of the day, so please drive carefully in and around the school, it does get very congested up in there. And finally, I want to thank all of the partner agencies, community members, and everyone else who's reached out and offered support to the La Sure Police Department and to city staff, or Officer Hogan's, on time and passing. Thank you to everyone. And city council's next meeting will be September eighth, that's all I have to do.
Thank you, Mr. Roby, appreciate your update, anybody have any questions regarding his update? If not, that'll take us into tonight's regular agenda, and we will be starting with A, the Park President's planning and zoning application consideration, Mr. Roby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this was a subject of much deliberation and discussion that last week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this was a subject of much deliberation and discussion at last week's planning commission meeting. And, um. Ultimately, the planning commission did provide a recommendation, uh, to approve several applications with conditions associated with the redevelopment. Of the Park Elementary School site. We do have, uh, members of the development team here with us, uh, Joe Brennan and Mark Basara. Um, if council wishes, I can certainly invite them up after we give a walkthrough of what's, what's on tap for the city council consideration tonight. So only administrator building official Nielsen is also here tonight. I'll do most of the talking, yeah, but you certainly hear as well. He's the staff liaison of the planning commission. And I can help answer questions as well. So it is something, um, at one fifteen Fifth Street North. There is a former elementary school, Park Elementary School, um, and the developers are working on the acquiring of property and pursuing a redevelopment. Turning the existing school structure into a sixty-two unit multifamily apartment building. Features are a three-story structure with parking, green space and site improvements. It would be a mix of studio, one, two and three veteran units. Um, and their site plan shows the existing gymnasium to pick up all courts. The developers listed real estate LLC, the two partner groups associated are branded companies and rebound partners. The requests before the city council tonight, um, that were submitted to staff and considered by a planning commission are a comprehensive plan amendment. Insulin map amendment, planned unit development application and an application for preliminary plant. So I'm going to walk through each of those applications. There will be some similarities, but I'll try to break them down individually. For the comprehensive plan amendment, there is a formal application when someone seeks to amend the comprehensive plan. The subject property itself, which may be a little bit difficult to pick out here, but it is this large yellow blob in the middle of that here. Um, that's the subject property. It's current designation, the comprehensive plan is guided low density residential or up to four units per acre. Uh, future land use map. It's proposed as part of this amendment to be rezoned, uh, to be amended, to be guided high density residential. Uh, which would apply to out to lot one, block one and not the outlaw on the preliminary plant. On the preliminary plant, the outlaw one is what we know now as the green space or playground. Uh, the comprehensive plan policy states that high density housing should be near arterial and collective roads, parks or downtown. We'll talk about roads here in a bit. Some of the, uh, questions that staff have raised and were addressed with the planning commission, um. Include that adjacent roads are not arterial or collector, uh, but they're local roads which are designed for smaller coastal traffic. The site is not located in the downtown area, but it is obviously near a park, American Legion Park. And a question of compatibility with neighboring property. So, um, when the conference plan and the future land use map was established several years ago. This area was guided low density residential to fit with the surrounding neighborhood, which is all. Um, R two, uh, low res, low density residential. The comprehensive plan amendment would seek, uh, application would seek to amend the comprehensive plan to guide, um, lot one, block one of the developments. Has high density. Associated with the comprehensive plan amendment would be a current zoning map amendment. The current zoning of this property is PI or public institutional as it has been, uh, since the inception conference plan because this property has. Uh, primarily been owned by institutional public body, um, the school district. The amendment as proposed would rezone this property R four. For high density residential with a planned unit development overlay, which means it would be zoned R four. But the PUD and the exceptions that will be granted as part of that flexibilities as granted as part of the PUD would be overlaid on that district and applied to that property. Some of the criteria that we consider when evaluating, uh, zoning map amendment are consistency with the comprehensive plan. Compatibility with surrounding land uses, which in this case are mostly low residential. Uh, low density residential performance with performance standards. So those are things like, uh, size of, uh, size of the lots setbacks, um, access to the properties. And then public service and traffic capacity. And much like the last slide, uh, some of the concerns, uh, addressed at planning commission or traffic generation on local roads. Obviously, this is. For many, many years, been a school, uh, which is not again ideal for local roads. If you compare. Roads that are adjacent to the Park Elementary School site, fifth, um, and, um, fifth, sixth and Swan. Those are local roads. Compared to Fary and Kingsway, which, um, are two more substantial roads that are designed for traffic. And then again, uh, compatibility with surrounding neighborhood properties are for multifamily versus R two residential. The third application is for a planned unit development. Uh, the purpose for a planning and development application is to provide the development with flexibility and parking, landscaping and site layout. What they're requesting is, um, the retention of forty-one substandard parking stalls. Um, so the, um. The parking lot on the north top northwest corner. Home elementary school parking lot, um, the stalls themselves are undersized, um, versus what is in zoning ordinance. Um, and the developer has provided some comments since the planning commission about what they would do to, uh, account for that and make sure that those stalls do in fact conform. To, um. To city code, um, but it would involve the addition of, um, parking units on the south side with the new parking lots going. Um, they're also requesting no indoor parking, um. Per city code, multifamily units require two parking stalls per unit, one of which must be covered in a structure. And the request here for a couple of different reasons is to allow for no. City council would grant the developer the ability to, um. Develop this property without covered parking. Uh, reduced landscaping, this was discussed quite a bit at, uh, planning commission. So there's a calculation that goes into. Lot size and how many trees should be planted according to the lot size and the type of, uh, the type of use. According to the math, there should be ninety-eight trees that are required as part of this development. There are only forty-four that are proposed. The developer. Should they would plant as many as are reasonable that wouldn't, um. Um, detract from this sort of value of the property. And also they're requesting, um, a flexibility in the, uh, excision of the maximum impervious surface by seventeen point four percent. So currently. On this site, the previous surface is fifty-seven point seven percent of the area. Um, it could be a fifty percent or less was being proposed sixty-seven, one four percent. So it's already not in compliance. They're asking for an additional amount of impervious when they have a parking lot. That's another exception of the requesting. Um, the goals when, uh, when considering. In planning and development, and this is what planning commission talked about quite a bit and what city council is encouraged to consider is that. Purpose of a planned unit development is expressly not to just grant waivers for everything that. A developer can't otherwise achieve. The planned unit development is. Should be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Should provide for innovation, higher design standards and preservation of site characteristics, if that's important as part of the project. And ultimately should demonstrate clear public benefit. So we use BUDs where we. We consider there's a definite public benefit to a project. And while they may not be able to meet certain standards of the zoning code for any number of reasons. They're overperforming and on other areas that provide public benefits that city council end of the day can say you're not able to provide. Enough trees, but you're providing X, Y, Z other benefits. So that ultimately without the PUD, we would not be able to have this really nice project, but the PUD itself allows us to. Give the public this nice end product. Um. Some staff concerns, uh, identities were addressed, uh, and the planning commission discussed, uh, substandard parking and lack of garages. It may not mitigate some of the high density impacts. So one of the things that, uh, we would recommend council consider is. Areas where allowing an R four or a high density residential in a, an otherwise low density area would be, are there. Um, parts of development that are going to mitigate some of those impacts. So some of the things we look at are lighting, um, and parking. Um, so that the, the general look feel of the neighborhood, um, is not as significantly impacted. Limited landscaping reduces screening from adjacent homes. Is this something that in the packet, there's, uh, there's a letter from the developer that addresses some of the. Group screening that it was to, um, provide on their final site plan. That would increase or improve the screening between the subject property itself and adjacent properties. And again, the, the question of, of public benefit, um, is something that we would, uh, continue to ask city council for. Again, the, the goal of the BUD is to ultimately provide the public with. Better product that wouldn't be, um, wouldn't be available without, um, without planned unit development overlay. And ultimately the, uh, or finally rather, the preliminary plant. So on, on the screen here, you see lot one, block one on the western side, which is effectively everything. Everything east of the existing, um, alley or fire lane will become outlaw A. The plan to convey that to the city and then lot one, block one will be the remainder, uh, of the, the school campus itself that would be converted into sixty-two units. Proposals would be to combine the two current lots. So right now the, the property is two large, one large lot and one very small one. Um, the small lot is actually the northwest parking lot in front of the school at Bridge, at, uh, Fifth and Swan. That is a one very small parcel and then the rest is. It's a sizable, um, similar parcels. So they would combine it, um. The current slots and then separate out outlaw A and convey that to the city. Um. The city surveyor did note some discrepancies in the flat boundary. Um, this is a very old property. Um, so actually South Park Lane and Swan Street. Both exist as part of this property, so that would need to be cleaned up in, uh, in any final plant. So technically, even though, uh, via. Prescribed easement, the city has, um. Has legal use of both Park Lane and Swan Street. Technically, the school district owns the land that covers. South Park Lane and Swan Street. So that would need to get cleaned up. Um, so I've mentioned most of these before, but just in summary, and I do want to talk about the traffic. Um, land use intensity, something to consider shift from high density residential and otherwise low density neighborhood. Again, that's what the conference plan amendment, the application is seeking to do. Um, traffic local roads may not support high density housing traffic and the overflow parking that might be necessary. Uh, the PUD flexibilities that are being granted balancing that with the public benefit due to the lack of garages and potential substantial. Um, parking outweigh the public benefit, um, that the community would see in return. The developer has, uh, provided a statement saying that they would, um, address the increased runoff on the final site plan. That is caused by the increasing impervious surface. Um, and that is one of the, it's also one of the engineers comments that, uh, planning commission petitioned the, the recommendation. Uh, so just real quick, and this is, um. For anyone following at home who's interested in the types of road classifications, uh, the codes didn't come through here, so I apologize. Um, when we look at major collector roads and minor collector roads and the orange and shiny. So I apologize, it's not very helpful. Um, but effectively again, Swan Street, Fifth Street, Sixth Street are not, um. Um, arterial collector streets which are specifically designed to be able to handle significant amounts of. On-street parking and the types of heavy traffic that typically we associate with multifamily. So if we look at multifamily across the city. Turtle Street is a minor collector, um, Kingsway, um, is a, um. Should show apparently here as a minor collector, um. So we do try to purposely put those multifamily structures adjacent to more significant roadways. Now, having said all that, um. Just a couple of final thoughts. Staff and I think the planning commission, to be exact, which I can speak on behalf of the planning commission. Recognize that this is a creative use in preserving a historic building. This, the original structure that sits on the southwest corner of Park Elementary School is nearly a hundred years old. That's when the first conveyance property took place in nineteen thirty. When the original school was built. Um, so it is certainly a creative use in, uh, restoring this old property and converting it to a new use. Um, we've already discussed or shared the significant change in land use intensity that could raise compatibility concerns. Um, balancing the requested flexibilities of the PUD with the public benefit. Um, ensuring that stormwater and impervious surface issues are considered, which again, the, the developer has a state that they will consider. And ultimately, what we ask city council, um, is does the project align with the comprehensive plan and provide for a public benefit. Now, planning commission, as I mentioned earlier, they have a public hearing back on August fourteenth for members of the public. And the commission, after much deliberation and discussion and several motions and lots of, or conversation. Ultimately voted to recommend approval of the four applications with a set of conditions. Those conditions are, are laid out in the agenda packet. And then I also again, uh, provide the developer's response to those commissions in the packet as well. Um. Mr. Nielsen, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I don't have anything in time. If you have any questions, you can let me know. I'll be more than happy to answer your questions. Thank you. So. With that said, uh, I know we have a couple of representatives here from, uh. Mr. Brennan's here and I'm sorry, your last name, Mark?
Basara.
Basara, um. I know you guys want an opportunity to, to address these conditions and these expectations that the, uh, planning and zoning is laid out for you. And with that said, if it's okay, would I get a, here from now? This time, who'd like to start? Mr. Sorry? You've got a, um, a, a set of challenges or expectations that were laid out by the planning and zoning. And, uh, we'd just like to, uh, hear from you on how you're going to meet these expectations.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, first, I'd like to just. Express my condolences on a loss of Officer Holland. That's obviously a very challenging thing for the community. You started to hear that news. Um, thank you for giving us this forum. Thank you for members of. The audience for being here tonight and for everybody who's helped us navigate through this prior, uh, project through the city to this point. Um, if I could, I'd like to just share a little bit about who we are and then address the items that were shown on the screen that could suit you all well. Um, my name's Mark Basara. I'm the director of development for Rebound Partners. We're a Northfield-based, uh, commercial real estate development investment management company. Um, we do real estate development all across the state of Minnesota. Down in Iowa a little bit, but generally through, um. Community partnerships and kind of outstate communities like Lusor, La Cica and Northfield and all the time comparable, um, and, uh. Our mission is really impact investing through real estate, bringing the community a, uh. Community return for these projects and also a financial return for those participants who choose to invest into them. Um, we are in joint venture partnership with my, our partner back there, Joe Brennan. Uh, Brennan Companies and Rebound Partners make up the two managing partners of the entity you saw on the screen behind this project. Um, Brennan Companies is Mankato-based general contractor. They have some, um, very positive experience in the community of Lusor through Tiller and Main Project, which they were the. Contractor on a handful of years ago and, um, this project came to us through them. Um, Joe's father, Mike, put the property under contract with the school district a couple of years back. And, uh, we were fortunate enough to get engaged as rebound partners, uh, early last year, twenty twenty-four. Um. This kind of project, and then our wheelhouse, it's a historic tax project, as you all know. Um, it's something that we've done quite a bit, oh, quite a lot of housing is something we do quite a lot of and, uh, Joe. And his company's construction experience is. and his company's construction experience is perfect for a project like this. So if there are any questions or if you all care to learn more about us and how we operate, above any chance to share more beyond this forum. It is a complicated project. There are no doubts about that. There are a lot of points in it to navigate. And there's been a lot of time spent by a lot of people in this room to work through that. And we thank you for those efforts and endeavors to this point in time. Last, or on the fourteenth, as Mr. Roby said, was a very positive and I thought productive planning commission session where fortunately, the project was able to move to this forum. We prepared a response late last week. And from our perspective, the conditions that the planning commission put on the project are able to be met, but for one, we think that we can accommodate all of the all the questions, all the concerns and and any any of the conditions that were put on the project. The substandard parking stalls can be redesigned, not a problem. The tree quantity, I actually don't think that ended up being a condition, but the tree quantities we are planning to maintain as is. The impervious service per service surface percentage is something that we can discuss and figure out the merit merits of. Nonetheless, the stormwater treatment that comes off that additional impervious surface will be accommodated and treated. Joe mentioned that there were some concerns raised by Bolton Bank on the plat and survey work. We received an updated survey last week. That's not something Justin or Joe have seen yet, but we believe that's that resolved and we'll be able to navigate that over the course of the next week or two. We have heard concern about the potential added density and and the additional vehicular traffic because of that added density to the site. As part of our original PUD application, there are a handful of points that we pulled from the twenty forty comprehensive plan that we felt meaningful. I'll just read a couple, if you don't mind. One, encouraged the preservation rehabilitation of existing, I'm going to paraphrase too, because some of these are wrong, but of existing structures and sites and integrate historic interpretation and signage to highlight these hidden historic sites to tell the story of Los Sur's neighborhoods. Additionally, in the live portion of the comprehensive plan, expand the housing stock to address the unmet needs of potential residents and employees. We're bringing sixty two homes to the community here in Montpel Swoop. Leverage community partners to support housing development and rehabilitation. That is what Rebound Partners does. That is kind of our bread and butter. We look to engage local as much as we possibly can. We have a track record of doing so since two thousand and eight. One point that I did want to mention, the gentleman Aaron Johnson, who was here a bit earlier from Smith. Rebound Partners and Smith have a long track record and history together, and they are invested in almost all of our endeavors within their territory to some degree or another. And then encouraging new housing development to meet gaps in the housing market. Again, I go back to the last point. And then lastly, leverage existing natural features and amenities to provide positive open space areas, trails, corridors, and stormwater management opportunities. We think that this site checks all those boxes, especially with the preservation of that existing green space in perpetuity. So we think that the project is a home run. We know that it doesn't come without its challenges. One of the points that I wanted to address on the additional density is traffic. We heard a lot of concern from neighbors. Wouldn't be surprised if we hear more on that tonight. In the time we've had since the planning commission meeting, we did have a traffic consultant take a look at the proposed development as compared to the past use and a potential other use, future other use, if someone were to come in and do a lower density development of this land in its entirety as it's planned in the comprehensive plan. And the elementary school as it was is over two X the traffic that will generate for the new proposed sixty two units, two hundred and fifteen percent. And this is based on number of students and staff that we received from the school district. So it's, you know, it's our best bet against what the data we have. Should there be a lower intensity use somewhere between thirty and forty homes? The school only generates somewhere between ten and thirty percent more traffic than those single family homes, depending on how many homes can fit on that site. So from our perspective, yes, there's sixty two new homes locked in one spot. There's a building there that should be preserved, can be preserved as instruments available to us to preserve it. It is a can argue whether or not people think it's beautiful, but it is, from our perspective, beautiful building, has deep meaning with the community and obviously history with probably a handful of folks in this room having intended there or at least some of their children there. It's in fantastic shape. I shared at the planning commission meeting, probably before that, I've done a handful of historic tax credit rehabilitations. I've worked on a building that's been in better shape than this one. That's going to stand the test of time once it's has a little bit of TLC put into it. From the inside, it's going to be new. From the outside in, hopefully, it continues to look like Park Elementary, y'all know and love, and is a meaningful contributor to the community. And we hope that we can do it in a way that you see fit. The one condition I want to come back around to that we believe is going to be a challenge for us to accommodate those structured parking stalls. There was a condition for thirty one structured garages or what have you on site. Given the historic tax credit nature and instrument that we're using to finance the redevelopment of this project, it changes the integrity of the site, changes the character of the site, changes the relationship of the school to the open space. It was not something that was ever there, and it jeopardizes our ability to finance the project using that instrument. So it's not something that this point in time or at any point in time in our pursuit of this project that we believe is a possibility. So we hope you will meet us there and and find some reason than that. And if we we're more than happy to discuss it further. All of the conditions we believe we're able to address in a meaningful way and satisfy both staff and other members of the city. So ready to keep that brief? I'm happy to feel any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mark. Do you mind if I call you Mark?
I think Val.
You gave a good presentation. What what does appeal to me is the preservation of a historical building. And also more housing for this community. That's what that's what we're looking for. It really is what we're looking for. But what concerns me, Mark? What concerns me is the disruptions and the challenges that are created by our comprehensive plan, especially with the parking. And from what you're telling me, it's it's not going to move at all. Because from what I understand, there was supposed to be sixty two garages?
Correct. Yeah. So the city ordinance calls for two parking stalls per unit, which we do have onsite. There are two parking stalls per unit. And we agreed to find a way to make those sixty two parking stalls meet the physical requirements of ordinance, but for being structured. So the second part of that is that one, I agree, two of those stalls would be a structured parking stall. So for sixty two units, we'd have one hundred and twenty four stalls. I might have just misspoke a second ago. We'll have two stalls per unit, one hundred and twenty four on site. Ordinance requires one of those to to be structured. And of course, and we can do none. Planning commission did power to reduce that requirement down to thirty one.
So they they moved it down to thirty one?
They did. Yes.
You're not moving up from there?
We've we've done dozens of housing projects across the state, and we always try to provide covered parking. We will, we see it as an amenity to the projects. Just can't do it.
One thing that kind of strikes me about this project, again, I I love the housing. Love to see more of it in our community, but I was a little surprised to hear the sixty one units in that building, which I I caught me a little off guard. I thought it was more than what I would have expected there. It just seemed like a lot of a lot of density in a small area.
We think it's a, I mean, we think it's very appropriate. First of all, in a building of this size, it's over a hundred thousand square feet. We would ordinarily see a much higher density of units than that in the same footprint as the reuse there. So there are all kinds of caveats that come along with with that. And we're effectively using the classrooms as the units. Little Jim is getting four units in it, but other than that, generally speaking, for just using those spaces on either side of the corridor and putting dwellings where the classrooms were. And it's a nice mix of units ranging from alcoves all the way up to three bedrooms.
And some of these other expectations, and some of the things that concern me is is, you know, the impervious surface and the landscaping and, you know, they've kind of laid out what their expectations are for for you. Who in return, you kind of said that's something we can talk about later, but I I just haven't heard any assurance that those will be met.
We are, I mean, we we've put a formal response in to the planning commission's motion, and our response is yes to all those things. There is documentation that will need to happen, and you know, the actual plan to be presented to the city staff for their review and approval of all those conditions still needs to be created. This happened a week and a half ago. But yeah, we're committing to satisfying those conditions. There are there are certain matters that Mr. Roby mentioned, the impervious surface percent percentage is calculated based upon redrawing the property line and how much of the how much impervious surface is on the new parcel of property. If we were to retain the open space to the east, that impervious percentage drops down below forty percent, which is well below the city ordinance. So it kind of is a matter of perspective as to what you want to take into consideration. We're still saying we'll treat the rate of stormwater runoff because of the additional impervious surface addition. Do we want to redraw the property line and bring the percentage down below ordinance or or at least back to what it was? Or absolutely open that conversation. That's really kind of everyone that I'm staring at. And then some to, you know, help guide us on is what you really want. Do you want to preserve that space as green space? Or do we want to put it on the other side of the property? Excuse me, on the other side of the property line is is our property. The landscaping, the screening of the parking lots, the size of the parking stalls. Let me just go down the list here. I mean, everything, all other conditions. We believe we're going to meet. And again, I don't believe that the quantity of trees was a condition that the planning commission put on that motion. Said both, I don't want to put any words in anybody's mouth, but it seemed like that was an appropriate number at the time.
It seems like a lot of these expectations are all you're you're kind of landlocked. So if you give up, if you give up some parking space for more green space, then you're going to lose parking space. If you try to solve the parking space problem, then you're going to you know, create another problem with the green space.
Impervious surface goes up. Correct. Same thing with structured stalls. Not our primary motivation whatsoever, but should you build garages, they are roughly speaking, a hundred and fifty percent in size from the traditional parking stall. So your land use efficiency goes down and it's a trade off. So again, doesn't need to be like the deciding factor to allow us not to do garages. My our motivation, as I mentioned, is really through the vehicle with which we're person in the financing of the project. But it's it is a factor in the conversation nonetheless.
Anybody else have any questions? Comments?
I just want to comment after listening to the public comments that were made during the public hearing on the fourteenth. And the planning commission's deliberations that they had, it was very substantive. They had a very good discussion. They were pretty adamant that they wanted the garages there to fit our code. And I do have to agree with the planning commission. I can't see this going forward without the garages.
Before we go any further, I want to give an opportunity to some of the people who came here, I believe, Mr. Denzer, Mr. Kale, you said you wanted to address this subject. This is your opportunity. If one of you want to step forward, why don't we start with Mr. Denzer? Mark, thank you. We may call you back up.
Thank you all very much.
Jerry, welcome.
I'm not good at this. I'm Jerry Denzer. My wife, Betty, and Eric Schenke came along tonight. We live on one twelve South Park Lane. Just want to tell you how we got into the neighborhood. We bought our home in twenty twenty, or twenty oh four, twenty one years ago. Because it was quiet, single family homes, parkways, and the elementary public school was in the neighborhood. The school didn't cause, didn't pose a problem to the neighborhood with traffic only being slightly familiar in the morning for one hour, coming to school in the afternoon for one hour, leaving school. The school is only open nine to ten hours a day, five days a week, and less on holidays and vacations. We received a letter beginning of August here stating in three short paragraphs that there was a public hearing to be considered changing the comprehensive zone planning and preliminary plan to our four high density residential to accommodate the elementary school being converted to a multi multi-family residential structure. Not knowing any of the details we attended the meeting. To begin with, I'd like to point out the school school district still owns the property. And it's the school district's responsibility to resolve the problem of what to do with the old school, not the city of Los Sur's problem. And I'll elaborate on that a little bit later. To begin with, the comprehensive plan currently the land use map within the country comprehensive plan indicates the property is guided as low density residential use up to four units per acre. The elementary school is listed as public institutional. The current plan indicates that the school if the school is eliminated, that the future use revert back to low density residential compatible with the surrounding uses. Now, the developer proposes the site to be high density residential, ten to thirty units per acre. Now, I'm sure that when there was considerable effort and thought put in drafting and creating the comprehensive plan and zoning and orange ordinances, which are consistent with the with the comprehensive plan. My question to the council is, how can the comprehensive plan and zoning plans be changed at the whim of the developer and disregard the residents in the area? Remember, the developer has no skin in the game, meaning he doesn't own the property. But the residents in the area do have investments and concerns. As pointed out by the city planner, there are several concerns and zoning requirements that are not being done. Roadways adjacent to the site are lower level road designs, and they're designed for local residential traffic, not higher classification archerial archerial or collector roads appropriate for high density housing. With greatly increased traffic on the street, parking concerns adjacent to the building entrances and exits, street water pounding problems and snow removal issues, Bridge Street, Fifth Street, and Swan Street are major concerns. Along with that, emergency vehicle access concerns need to be addressed. Having poor access on the service road to the east side of the building to be able to get emergency vehicles in that area. Four units were pointed out to not meet the minimum size of the base of based on city's multi-family housing zoning standards. The city ordinance requires two parking stalls per unit or one hundred and twenty four parking stalls, forty one stalls that currently substandard and do not meet the city standards.
Jerry, you're doing well. You got about forty five seconds.
Oh, give me a break. Okay, there. On-site parking garages on the initial plan, ordinance say one unit says one per unit. But zoning committee recommends thirty one garages. Why is there a change in the city zoning ordinance? Lack of stormwater management, you know, four districts, the management maximum impervious impervious surfaces allowed in the site is fifty percent. This will increase from fifty seven point seven percent to sixty four point seven without the developer proposing any significant storm management to mitigate that increase. Landscaping and screen and screening requirements are not met. So the ordinance requires ninety eight trees to be planted on the site based on the building floor plan, the site perimeter, the number of multi-well and number of multi-well units. Developer only have proposed forty four lighting and proposed screening. For lighting is not adequate for resident potential properties, especially on the parking areas. Exterior will remain largely unchanged on the building. Developer claims exterior facade is only to be selectively prepared and tuck planted. Meaning it'll look like an old school building with people living in it.
Jerry, thank you. Thank you. We're 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 good. Time is up. Five minutes is what we give everybody. You've done very well.
Can I get into the tax increment financing part?
No, 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 no. Next agenda item is that. So that that's where you can address that. Mr. Kale, you want to step forward? Mr. Denzer used a little of your time, so you can keep yours for an hour and a half minutes.
We have a nice favor to you. I own property on the first side of the house, the school, the subset of the school. Nice holdings and I'm concerned about inadating with parking with this project and traffic. Where is? Where is the people for the visitors going to park? My biggest concern, I don't want cars parking in front of my homes. Period. And who is going to supervise that? Who's going to, if somebody's from. From visitors from the the project that's parking in my properties all the time, who's going to supervise that again? And please, do I have to go through all? What's the tense of my debt? It's like talking to a black wall. Who's going to what's in this project that says the owner is going to be responsible for these people parking off that property? Friend people homes. Good example is the new apartment building you put in the mall. They get it? They should be using the parking lot. But now they're parking along Second Street, right? Craft from now and it's causing a traffic hazard. There's people coming down the Berry Street, you know, they gotta make a big U-turn and now it's a actually a traffic hazard right now. That's a good example. People aren't going to be parking on the property. People are parking on people's front yards. They're in front of homes. Now who's going to supervise that? What do you have there? People are not going to be. Are going to be using the parking lot instead of getting parked in front of people's homes. I will probably the north side, the south side of this building. And I don't want people parking in front of my homes. Who is going to supervise that? And is it only going to be responsible if somebody somebody up? Somebody's parking in front of your home from the project, who is going to supervise that and make it a law there is that's it's six. Landowner will be responsible. I don't want people parking in front of my properties. So that's it. So if the parking is for this building is inadequate. There has to be something done before this project is approved. Because you have less pro less partners or at the traffic. That's what you can't tell me that's not going to be a lot of more traffic. So this has to be addressed before anything is that for this project, nobody, people park in front of your homes. And they have you right now. There's not adequate parking way out way out here today. Well, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Barry Kale. I appreciate you sharing your passion, your concerns, and we will all keep that in consideration. So with that said, does anybody from the council make any comments, any questions? For developers, for city administrators, for our planning commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion from uh council. We've got two options out there, actually three. Anybody?
We don't prove it.
So we've got a motion to direct the staff to bring back the to the city council's findings of denial based on the comprehensive plan amended. Being consistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, zoning map amended, not being consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Great, that that one.
You can all read it up there. So we've got a um. Council member Nelson has made that recommendation. Anybody want to second that? Wendy seconded or Councilmember Smith seconded?
Can I ask a clarification? Just to be clear, the motion that drafted here states that. Passing city staff to bring back findings of denial based upon. Effectively denying all applications. So this is a good. There are similarities between them. I just want to be clear that that's the intent of the motion is that there are findings with each of the four applications that are problematic and not just one. Okay, so the motion would be to direct staff. Bring back findings of denial based upon the comp plan not being consistent, the amendment not being consistent with the comp plan. The zoning amendment not being consistent with the comp plan. PUD not clearly meeting the requirements of the purpose statement, including not demonstrating a definitive public benefit. And that the preliminary plan is not consistent with the zoning requirements. Just to clarify that, decided options.
And seconded by the council member Smith. Any other discussion, questions, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have an option to the council as denied this for the following reason. Thank you. Which takes us on to item eight B, which is resolution R twenty twenty five dash zero four two, the park residence call for TIF district twenty three. Mr. Roby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So uh the uh resolution from city council related to. Plans in A A, I just want to be clear that when we look at a development. That also has a taxing requirement financing component. The city treats those on separate parallel tracks. So there are different applications for planning and zoning components than there are for taxing and financing. While they're related in terms of the project that they pursue or associated with, they are separate tracks. So that in theory, the city council can consider planning and zoning applications, approve or deny them. And then approve or deny any associated tax increment financing district. So that's why we try to bring these at the same generally the same meeting because the project, they generally go hand in hand, but they do not have to. Uh so the developer pursuing redevelopment of Park Elementary School that we've just heard about. As part of the redevelopment is developers request an application for the creation of a tax increment financing district. And I understand that was just a motion to bring back findings of denial, but I think it is, there still was an application. For tax increment financing district. So it would still, just to be clear, still be appropriate for city council to consider. The TIF application. They did apply for it. The E D A did recommend that city council call a public hearing. So I'll talk to that process. So the E D A had their July meeting asked city council to call a public hearing related to this development itself. If approved, residents were approved, city council would call a public hearing would be duly known as and held on November twenty fourth this fall. It would address the establishment of the district and approve the consideration of approval of the TIF plan itself. The public hearing is called and held city council and then subsequently the E D A would be asked to consider approval of the TIF district. Just an overview and all the information I know is in your packet. There's a lot of information in there and those who are on the E D A have already discussed this, but. Summary of the request, Mr. Sheshin, I'm sorry, Shannon Sweeney is here. He's. He's an expert at this. And so Shannon, feel free to to interject with any additional comments that you may have, but I'll just give you the summary. The bridge Shannon Sweeney. The TIF requests itself, the application is for a twenty six year duration TIF with a ninety percent reimbursement over the life of the TIF. The baseline of the property right now is eight hundred fourteen, the assessed value is eight hundred fourteen thousand dollars. So because that's. It's not taxed right now. That's the baseline assessed value of the property right now. So if that goes into private hands, that baseline value hits the tax rolls right away. And it would be any incremental value on top of that that would be included in the TIF. So right now, the TIF projection shows that the final estimated market value for this sort of county accessory would be ten point four or five million dollars. Uh the math that suggests that it's estimated that per year one hundred ninety three thousand six hundred ninety two dollars would be the estimated increment. Of which at ninety percent reimbursement, one hundred seventy three thousand six hundred twenty six will be reimbursed to the developer. Estimated at four point five million dollars over the length of the twenty six year TIF. The, as we discussed at the E D A and this we've had this conversation at council with previous page, you go to projects. The the tax increment financing is a tool that this city has used for a number of projects in the past where there's a. By benefit to the community. Where the TIF financing is a requirement of the development and the city finds that it is appropriate to to grant. Incremental tax, assessed value taxes to a specific project to allow for it. So most recently, the city council approved the creation of ten. TIF district one dash twenty two, which was the Ridge Road development that granted. Tax increment financing for that project. Uh the resolution R twenty twenty five dash zero four two would, again, it's not an approval of the establishment of the TIF district. All for the public hearing associated with that. And the other component that I don't want to forget about is the arranging of substantive inspections. So in order to qualify for redevelopment TIF. First statute, you have to have a substantive inspection that defines what the um. The effectively how standard in dollar turns the building is and has to be a certain degree. In order to qualify them for redevelopment TIF. So the resolution would go set the public hearing and arrange for substantive inspection to take place. Mr. Sh, is there anything as you share with the council this time?
No, you handled it well.
I don't know about that, but thank you. I can only answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roby. Anybody have any questions regarding? The R twenty twenty five dash zero four two. Go ahead, Mr. Sweeney.
Since this step was related to the project that we were just discussing prior to the announcement. Is it just related to the property itself or was it related to the project?
It's related to the project itself, the specific project. So in theory, another TIF district could be established on this property at some point, but we don't have those. The specifics of what those numbers would be, we would have to go and run the assessed value of the project in the future.
So based on our last vote, would it be appropriate to just deny this or table?
Council couldn't take any action, don't choose us.
Do believe you just had a motion put on the table.
Oh, did we?
You deny it, so I was just.
Are you, you're making, your motion is to deny uh R twenty twenty five dash zero four two at this time? Or to deny the TIF application?
Okay.
So is that what the resolution is calling for?
No, the resolution is calling you.
Just to do.
Yes, so.
Just to do a public hearing.
It is not time for discussion. No one's there. There's a motion on the table. So all the rules are already asked up.
Okay, okay. So we've got a motion to deny the tip for the uh. Our residents this time from. For tip app for the TIF application for the district twenty three public. And this is not for the hearing, this is for the application altogether.
Can you clarify what your motion is?
Yes, I I it makes sense to me to not go through the process if the project's not happening. So. If another project comes up that's going to request a TIF. Application, then we could address it at that time. So I don't see the.
So council members' motion is to deny the TIF apparently for the district point three or for the park elementary residence.
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? I'll second that motion. All those in favor? Discussion, go ahead. Anybody have any questions? I seconded the motion.
I still don't see where. This is not talking about an application.
It's talking about a public hearing.
Right. So you're talking about something altogether.
We don't know. I guess I'm I'm a little under the understanding of why have a public hearing on something that we've denied. Mr. Sweeney, you want to clarify your things?
I would say the city has an application process. We received an application. It's tied directly to a project and so it wouldn't make sense to call for a public hearing that we don't intend to hold. Or draft a tax increment plan for a project that we intending to not do. So. I I think it would be appropriate to deny the application if you don't choose to proceed with the project. So.
That's exactly what council.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? We've had the motion and just to be clear, I think to answer your question, that's where the Williams said.
That is an option. It's in front of the council as part of the consideration. Of the resolution that because there's an application process at at this point, the council could and the motion has been made. To instead of voting specifically on the resolution first. Without considering the resolution. The resolution was drafted because by staff. Because that's what the E D A had recommended. The E D A recommended it.
To me, it's like you would table this. Rather than deny the application completely. When they have to kind of go through to reestablish their project.
And then we would get another application.
Then they have to do another application.
So. I think I said you, I want your page to. You're gambling the TIF hearing because we just.
We have emotions to deny the.
Right. But we've asked the staff to look back at it. Again, correct?
Based on our last vote, what is the process for that or that?
We would bring back to see council a proposal to deny all the applications based upon effectively. The applications would be denied. The TIF itself as a separate component would be. The application stays out there until it's either approved or denied.
So again, we're going to circle back and doing a motion to deny for the park residence. It's been seconded. Any other discussion? Comments?
You're saying you're denying the application.
Yeah.
The hearing and application, the whole. All those in favor? Three. Anybody opposed?
I agree.
One, two, three, four. Okay, so the table's open again.
To make a motion that we table this for the discussion.
Motion's made to table resolution R twenty twenty five dash zero four two. Seconded by council member Sullivan. Motion came forward from council member Schlier. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Let me make sure I got this straight. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? Three, council member Smith, council member Nelson and mayor Kirby. So the ayes have it. This is tabled until further notice. So the ayes have it. This is tabled until further notice. Which takes us on to American Legion Park being our grand overview, this is, uh, and I am being seen, so we'll be doing this for us.
I would think this more, um, so just for clarification, uh, before we go into this, the purpose of this agenda and the discussion only. Um, there's no action required on behalf of the city council tonight. Both of the history of how we got to where we are today with the outdoor recreation grant. And then, um, it's open for city council conversation, and the, the process will become a little bit clearer as I go through it. Director Transberg is also here, he's been working more closely with the project and the application process. And, uh, is available to, uh, to answer the questions or fill in any gaps, uh, in the presentation. The, uh, Minnesota D N R provides an outdoor recreation grant program which covers up to fifty percent of project costs its, uh, its application qualifications. The city has applied for grants, it was grant program for Mayo Park and American Legion Park previously in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, both unsuccessfully. And then in twenty twenty five again, uh, Mayo Park application in twenty twenty five was, uh, again denied. And, um, however, the D N R has awarded seventy two hundred and twenty one thousand one hundred forty one dollars for a project making accessibility and recreation improvements to American Legion Park, and that project would take place in twenty twenty six. Notably, our sister, uh, community Anderson, uh, was also awarded a D N R outdoor recreation grant. I'm not sure of the timing of that, like, project was, it's suspected it's twenty twenty six, uh, for their, uh, recreation, this splash pad, big and care of the, uh, um, that was over two hundred thousand dollars, so Anderson was awarded, um, as well. Um, so because it's a, uh, a state and federally involved grant process, there are some series of steps now, the D N R has selected a project, uh, as an awardee. Uh, now, D N R leads the process to go through the Minnesota State Resort Preservation Office, Shippo. Um, the, uh, National Park Service needs to be involved, um, just to make sure that the, the, the property itself meets, uh, specific guidelines. Um, there's tribal consultation involved in that as well. With a grant agreement, which would be the next formal step that city council would be asked to make, anticipated for late twenty twenty five. Um, so D N R will notify us when we have a grant agreement, uh, in place. And, uh, one thing before I give the specific map, although I know that that's the titillating part of this slide. Um, is that city council did vote in earlier this year to grant city staff or direct city staff to apply for the grant. So every year before we apply for this, we do ask the city council, would you like to apply for the grant? Uh, city council did, and our PAC did at the time, recommend approving, uh, city council to, uh, direct staff to apply for the grant for both Mayo and Legion Park. To this side, and has already had, uh, city council in for earlier this year. Um, the map has not changed from that application. The improvements are shown in yellow highlighted areas here. And again, they're focused on accessibility and recreation improvements to new major A D A compliant trail connections connecting the South Trail to, uh, the, uh, the shelter area. And then a secondary A D A compliant access from the north parking lot to the shelter area as well. Um, because you also add a concrete plaza area on the western side of the, uh, the existing shelter along with permanent benches. And then additionally, there would be a vitaminous asphalt, um, effectively as a trail that was doubled then as a skating loop and skating area in the winter time with synthetic ice structures placed in the winter months. Um, and also native plantings, benches, and additional lighting in Legion Park. Um, both, uh, recreation parks advisory committee are packed, and the E D A have reviewed the plans and have recommended the city council group moving forward with the project. Uh, this is included in your packet, but, uh, this is where the cost estimates are right now that were included in the application to the D N R for grant itself, again, reverses fifty percent of the project cost. The city, of course, given, uh, personnel and equipment that we, uh, currently have, um, would be able to, uh, complete a lot of the work ourselves. Uh, what we would, uh, need to do is purchase some of the, uh, materials associated with the project. And that would come in the form of the cash match. Uh, so the goal with, the goal with any grant is that if there is a match component and we're allowed to, for the grant terms, provide for the match in terms of in kind, meaning we don't entirely contract or buy things that we can do it ourselves. We prefer to do that and minimize the actual out of pocket cash. Um, maintenance, um, beyond the construction of this project is anticipated to be generally minimal, complete with existing equipment and personnel that we have on site. And so that snow removal, that's general maintenance, that's, um, putting in and removing the synthetic ice panels, um, at the end and beginning of each season. So as an additional context here, I wanted to reference back to the twenty twenty parks, open spaces and trails plans. This was a plan that was commissioned in twenty nineteen, city council commissioned, kicked off, involved public, uh, a lot of public input. And, um, the image you see on the screen here is a rendering of what Legion Park, I don't want to say should look like, but could look like, that came out of the post plan. Um, it featured additional trails, additional play spaces, um, the potential for splash pad area, plaza area outside of the existing shelter, and then a large civic lawn area. Uh, so the first time the city applied for this grant in twenty twenty three, this is effectively the plan that we sent into the D N R. We said, we've already done the planning for this. This is what, uh, the, uh, approved plan called for, this is what we'd like to do, and the D N R said, yeah, that's okay, but this is an outdoor recreation plan. And, um, the, a civic lawn area, this is in twenty twenty three, was not considered as, as open as the opportunities may be for that. Um, was not considered, um, recreation enough. Um, so when the, uh, city went back in twenty twenty four to reconsider, to ask the D N R to, to consider the grant again, this is effectively the plan you showed them. The addition of the trails, the addition of the concrete plaza, the shelter, um, being able to connect the structures within the park, whether they're currently, um, connected. And introduce a new recreational space. A lot of the reasons for this particular recreational space is, uh, this, this two-fold, one is limited current use of Legion Park during the winter time. Um, it's low utilization of the park generally because there, there just aren't as many offerings in the winter time for Legion Park. The second is the increasing challenges of keeping ice on the outdoor rink. Um, we do offer public skate, uh, certainly at, at community center during the winter months. Uh, the hours have to be a little limited just because there's clearly given to the hockey programs. Um, and indoor public skate is very popular. Outdoor use of the, uh, rake, use of the outdoor rake has been hampered significantly by warmer winters. Uh, just really limits the time that we can keep really good ice on there. But we know we have people who want to utilize, um, skating, and we've seen, uh, other communities introduce outdoor, um, skating and not led this and not the way such as successfully. This is the plan that the D N R presented. So again, different than what the post plan called for in, in final design. Uh, but, uh, certain missing elements that have formed from the post plan. And these two diagrams here are, again, from the post plan on the left-hand side. Uh, each of our, is a, a ranking guy, each of our, um, each of our city parks was scored, uh, based, uh, upon, uh, various aspects of the park, exceptional, good, adequate, and well. Um, on the right-hand side, you can see where each of these parks fell in, in ultimate scoring. And I think what's, what's valuable here is, um, a couple of things. One, we don't like to, we don't like to do a plan, or make a plan, and then shell it. We like to make a plan and then try to act on that. So, and we're talking about the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan is another lens through which this planning commission certainly and the city council also of use, land use planning and development in the community. The post plan similarly, um, has been not shelved, but it's been actively active upon. Uh, if you look at the parks up there with generally lower scores, um, there have been improvements, proactive improvements to most of them, Pier Loser Park, uh, the Rotary has adopted, the Lions also adopted, it's a little bit confusing to me who actually adopts it, there's a slight for both. But anyway, the Rotary has made some, uh, significant improvements, uh, to Pier Loser Park in the last few years with addition of lighting and new plantings. Uh, River Park, um, post plan suggested adding campsites, uh, at the recommendation of our PAC and a triple city council that were. Mayo Park, we understand continues to be challenged, but for some very obvious reasons. Get this proximity to the post plan. Bridge Frank Field, uh, we've talked a lot about that this summer with the improvements that are going in there, not only in terms of what the city has done, um, in, in, in kind contributions and cash contributions. But, um, the, the significant work that, uh, the volunteers of baseball association have put into improvements at Bridge Frank Field. So, but again, we, we, we've tried to be very deliberate with improvements in dollars that we're spending making and spending at public parks when we have the opportunity to do so. That's, that is the nexus of, uh, D N R outdoor recreation grants. We know we, we can serve our community better by making improvements to our parks, so we try to find every avenue we can. Um, and this is an avenue where, uh, we understand it's, um, there's a fifty thousand dollar, um, potential cash contribution on the part of the city. But it's an opportunity to receive over two hundred thousand dollars, about seven grand, and obviously wouldn't otherwise be available to make. With that, Mr. Transberg has stepped up, so I'm going to invite him to add anything that he would like, or if there questions about this. Again, there's no action required, there wouldn't be any action, um, formally until we receive a grant agreement.
Sure, I'd be happy, uh, just two things, and I'll let you ask me any questions. Um, one is, it's a multi-use area, so it will, it'd be skating area in the wintertime, and then in the summer, the skating, area will be removed, and it would be as for walking path, et cetera, walking skating, like rollerblading, et cetera. The other thing is, um, there is currently a veteran's memorial there, um, the city receiving grant in twenty twenty three. We work with our local, um, veterans organizations along with a, an engineering firm, um, company of the plan. And currently, the, the veterans organizations are working on, um, getting funding and, um, to create the new veterans memorial just on the south end of the park, so, um, the veteran's memorial will not be going away, it'll actually be better. I have a question. Sure. So you've got this outdoor skating rink, skating boards, isn't that going to be requiring water and a lift station and plumbing and doing all that stuff? I don't know how that works. No, it's actually synthetic, and so I think it's similar, I think there's a similar one in Mankato, from my experience.
Yeah, the, then the sibling park during the Kwanzaa slice, they have a synthetic ice area. House that you can skate on, so it's heavily utilized by, um, hockey programs who want to not, want to be able to put synthetic ice in a room without having to chill it. For reasons, so they're large panels that are, that become standard or custom designed, fit, and that, I mean, you can keep them in your room if you wanted to. But the plan would be to.
And then the whole then skate practice just for, is that ice?
You mean the oval?
Yeah, it's good.
The oval area?
Yes.
That would also just be kind of a free skate area.
So that's all black sand or whatever, synthetic. Yes, correct. That area would be the synthetic ice, and then the rest would be, um, you'd be able to walk up there. There's, you can just install, so you'd be able to watch your kids or watch other family members as they skate, and you can enjoy it.
It's not as big as a hockey rink, right?
No, no.
No, they'd be discouraged from it, sticks a box screen.
Yes.
I mean, you can use sticks and prongs on this, it is, but.
And then the other thing was the in-kind money, but you're still going to pay that wages. Correct, correct, yes, I mean, it's, it'd be part of our natural, but you're, you're, you're.
Yeah, so we, we would be paying those funds whether we, whether staff work on this project or work on any of the other projects, something.
So we'll add to their work.
Correct, I mean, it's, it's, if council decides to move forward with this, it's establishing that there's a, council has a priority to do this project. And therefore, it would be added, it would be additive to their work in the same sense that when we, um, ask staff to support an event downtown on Main Street, that is in addition to their work, but it's just re-prioritizes what their work is, but it would not be additive in the sense of overtime or additions to that.
I have a question. Is there been, um, like, how many man-hours every year could be dedicated to taking care of this, um, skating rink? And how much would that cost to take it, to put it up and take it down and, and to maintain it?
I don't have an hours estimate, um, but again, the, there would be no incremental cost above and beyond what the, would already be budgeted for staff during that year. But I don't have an hours estimate.
Is it difficult? So it's my understanding, it's very easy to maintain, very easy to put together and to take down. I'm sure the first time that we do it, it'll take a little bit longer, but once we understand how it works, it'd be pretty simple product, process. And then we'll be able to store it, you know, safe, right here.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, I haven't.
That's great.
Thank you. No other questions? We can move ahead. We're going to, uh, the twenty twenty five mid-year financial report.
Mr. Grant will be here to discuss our first half financial report, let's say.
Thank you. I know it's been a, a long evening already, so I'll try to go through this quickly, but if I am going too fast, or you have any questions at any point, just, uh, but, you know, um, we'll start with our general fund, uh, cash balances here. Uh, we've got our major funds that go into the, uh, general fund, if you can read that, but it's, uh, the, the one oh one in blue, that's our, our general fund. Um, that naturally takes a dip in the first half every year, uh, mainly because our L G A payments that we get from the state majority don't come in until July and December, so our revenue is, is down. We'll see some detail on each of these funds in, uh, upcoming slides, but that one's generally, uh, going down when we look at the first half financial report. Uh, for Fund two twenty five, it's our fire department, that's the red line. We usually have a little bit of an improvement in our cash balance because most of our townships, uh, pay for their services, uh, for the whole year at the beginning of the year, so we have, uh, received those payments, uh, in the, at the beginning of the year. Or, uh, Fund two thirty five, that's the airport, there's nothing notable to mention there, it's relatively, um, flat. Our four twenty, just kind of the, the black or navy blue line there, that's our capital fund. It has improved a little bit, that's mainly due to, uh, receiving some federal grants for our, uh, airport projects from, uh, actually past projects related, are the, the expense. Um, and four seventy seven fund, that is for Highway one sixty nine payment, we can have that one up a little bit, uh, but nothing major to note there. And then Fund six fifteen, that is the community center, uh, in red, um, that, uh, first half position has improved. Uh, a lot of that is due to, uh, a couple of things. One, we, we budget for improving the fund balance and cash position at the community center. And then also, most of our, uh, some part-time help, in particular at the, at the outdoor pool. Their wages usually aren't hitting above them until, uh, after July first. And then Fund seven oh one, that's our I T, uh, fund, uh, again, that's improved, um, twenty thousand dollars. I expect it to continue to improve. I expect it to continue to improve. We do have a lot of our expenses that we have there, we pay them for the full year. So our expenses are usually skewed a little bit more towards the beginning of the year while the revenue is flat. So, Joe, you can move on to the next slide here. This is a little bit more detail on our, our general fund one-on-one, which is kind of what most people think of when we say general fund. For our revenues here, I've got some notes off to the, the side that I've kind of touched on. But our property taxes is, you know, fifty-two percent, that's roughly on track for, for the year because we do get our payments in May and October primarily. Our licenses and permits, our building permit revenue is down. So I do think we'll, we'll miss that budget line a little bit due to other projects kind of scaling out or we thought there would be some new permits and licensing. Our fines and, the intergovernmental line, that is our L G A hits. So you can see it's very low, we attained that eleven, twelve percent. But again, I don't see any risk for that L G A line, it's just a timing when those payments come in. Our charges for services is is a little bit down, but our fines and forfeitures is up. So I think the, the two of those together, when that out, our interest earnings is a pretty small amount in our general fund, but that should come in close to budget. Our miscellaneous line, there's some corrections that need to be made there. I'd expect that line to end up close to budget by the end of the year. And then our transfers in are are set to budget, so they're exactly on fifty percent. So that's the revenue items. Down below is expenditures by department. Things to note that's sitting in some of these accounts here is for the P D, that one there in the middle, it's about fifty-two percent. So it's a little more than half attained through half or through the year. I do expect that will continue and our P D line will be a little bit more over budget. That's mainly driven by our transition to, you know, not quite twenty-four or seven, you know, with two officers on patrol, but, but moving to more robust coverage system model there. So it'll come a little bit, and we're adjusting that going forward in twenty twenty-six budget. The park school and road projects, we're driving some planning and zoning expenses up as we looked into those projects. And then some of the good things, third of things coming under. It does look like our legal fees have room to to come in under budget. Our unallocated expenditures, expect that to come in the budget to help offset some of those overruns before. Keep in mind, this is where we budget our cash position to maintain. As you said, aside a hundred thousand dollars to make sure we can adequately cover five to six months of operational expenses. As levies grow, we need to kind of keep that cash position growing with it so we can cover that in, in case of some unforeseen events. And then workers comp and, and general liability insurance, we've paid those for the years. So those numbers there are actually pretty close to final for the year. So those will, will come under a little bit. Go on to the next one. There is a higher level, the community center, we've got some notes up to the, numbers up to the side with some comments down below, just on some of those percent attainment numbers when they're not close to fifty percent or they're some material number. Charges for services, the youth hockey program will typically have a year pre-pays for their summer ice. So they've paid for us in the first half, a lot of what they're using for is being in July and August. Our wages and benefits, like I mentioned before, a lot of our part-time summer help is paid in the second half of the year. And then again, bullet number three, that's where we kind of have our fund balance improvement. Again, with the community center, that's one that's had a negative cash position for quite some time. And for the last several years, we've been setting aside a million dollars to improve that. So, so far this year, it looks on track to do that. Right, Joe? This one here, this is our I T fund, pretty much touched on that. Our transfers in is fifty percent, we're attained at about forty. The key thing there, like, our per expense, we don't have a huge amount there, it's twenty-five thousand. It's very cyclical and not as planned as our software and services. So now those kind of come up a little bit more unexpectedly. So hopefully that continues to run under budget, but there will, will see improvements in the cash position there as well. Go ahead. This is E D A, nothing of, they get, the, the numbers here a little bit smaller. You'll see our, our income is down a little bit because of the pending E D A land sale that has been going on for some time and now it's no longer pending. But we weren't able to rent out that land that we had a year to pass. So that is a hurt there, but it will also be offset again in the future of property taxes going forward, which is down the expenses and other, we won't have to pay for those. And we did receive an offset for our prorated amount in the sale of the land as well to offset some of that. You can go on, Joe. The next two are just, this is the fire apartments and, and the airport. There's really no operational changes or anything material that I would have to note there. So we move forward a couple. One more, okay. I'll just pause there. The general from the next few slides are enterprise funds, it'll be kind of the same structure, but if anybody had any questions or comments up to that point, up to this point.
Okay, I do, I have a question. What does L G A stand for?
Local government, local government aid.
And I guess I'm trying to understand why the permits is expect, the revenues, but expected to be done this year.
We were expecting them to be higher, given the potential development projects that were going, have been going on. And with those being delayed or scaled out a little bit more, we're just not seeing that permanent revenue come in as fast as we had thought. It'll, it'll come in for Ridge Road, which is spread out a little bit more over time as it pertains to the park school topic that we had tonight. Obviously, that's impacting from a permit.
You're not building all the houses at once. Oh, yeah, but I mean, when the twenty twenty-five budget was set, they were saying, now they're saying it's forty-eight thousand dollars down from what they expected. And it's because the permits for Ridge Road is just being spread out more rather than just being paid in twenty twenty-five.
Somewhat, it would be the, the two combined, that had been spread out a little bit more and the park school project not happening.
And sometimes, obviously, with permit revenue, it's, do try to adjust to this. And there's a good job of just trying to target, depending on who he's hearing from whom. I mean, there's, there's single-handed permitting, which is certainly some of the revenue, but, you know, historically looking at revenue, we've had some very, very significant years where industry in town does a major project, that's, that's really significant revenue. And we can also have an unbudgeted sixty thousand dollar revenue set in one year. So Justin tries to balance out how many lots are available, who's building, how quickly do we think project X, Y, and Z is going to get off the ground or not? And make a projection based upon that. And if the project Ridge Road, which had been expected to be, final plan was approved in February. And so we had expected at that time that we would see some groundbreaking happening at the end of March. Of course, that didn't happen for a number of different reasons until later this year, which has been delayed to the homes being built.
Thank you. Okay, so for the enterprise here, again, we'll get into these slide by slide. But you can see here, a lot of these funds were impacted. Six oh one, six oh two, six oh five, that's water, wastewater and storm by the CASA thirty-six payment that we finally made to the county here in twenty twenty-five. So it's, it's a cash statement, something that we were expecting, but we received those bond proceeds in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And we just had not been invoiced by the county until that project was completely final. So now we're seeing that dip into our cash position, but it's not anything that's unexpected. For electric, the six of four fund, it is down as we had planned it to because we were paying cash for that project, for the Forest Street project. And also just note for six of two, it's, it's even a little bit more drastic down because we have an audit entry that reimbursed that we were doing for twenty twenty-four that will then also be trued up once we get to the end of, of twenty twenty-five. So that will self-correct. Go on, Joe. For the water fund here, again, same, same format as before. For investment earnings, we do have some of our money for the water fund in a, a C D that will mature at the end of the year. And so we'll get those investment earnings there. So that's why that's a little lower, lower skewed. And then for capital, a lot of our capital projects just haven't materialized yet. And whether it be pushed out here or, or done here in the second half of the year. For wastewater, our S I U agreements, that's mainly our treatment for agri and the city of Henderson. Based on the way we invoice, there's about a two-month lag. So during June, we've only billed for four months. That will all get, we will have twelve months of revenue when we get to the end of the year. And when we invoice in January and February, that will be recognized when we go through bonded. It is a little bit lower because we haven't actually had as much to treat for agri, which is a good thing. And so that offset is kind of linked to down below bullet number four, where we're seeing lower chemical spending needed to, to treat that. So those, those items kind of go directionally hand in hand. The other income line, that is where that audit reversal entry gets, that's why that number's looking odd there. And then our capital line, that was all budgeted to be bonded so that, that spending there will be reimbursed when we go to bond here later this year. And for electric, good story here. Overall, the, the revenue totals forty-nine percent. We even see a little bit more in the second half of the year because most of our summer rates, or actually all of the summer rates hits in the second half of the year for, till that June out in the first of July. So June, July, August, September, all in the second half of the year. So we look good on that point. Or line, side note number four, M M P A, we've only paid for five months through June. So we've got a month lag there, so that's why that expense is a little bit lower there. And then the capital outlay is the North Forest Street project. We are tracking that on the balance sheet and not getting here. So we are expending those dollars, it's just not showing up on our expense line item. And then this one is Stormwater Fund. We haven't had, we had minimal maintenance and repairs here in twenty twenty-five, so that's good. Hopefully that will continue and then we could potentially run under budget there. And then our capital outlay is lower, we are shifting some dollars around to account for the Catalina Court Stormwater Project up by the, the new development. So we're, we're pushing out some of our Stormwater Plan out either later this year or into next year. And then that's, I think we have one slide here on, on refuse, but that's nothing we would have known to point out there. And then the, the last two chart, this chart is an eyesore, but it's just all of the cash balances by, by fund and for the major ones that have some major changes year to year. It's noted to the left, but a lot of those are things that we've already covered in prior slides. So the last chart is just in summary, in general, for the general fund. I do think that there's nothing that we're seeing so far that thinks overall that we will miss the budget. Do some of the, the expense overruns might cut into the amount of fund balance improvement we were budgeting for. But I don't think it will put us in a negative position there. But we'll continue to watch that as the year goes on and try to reduce expenses where we can. And then for the enterprise fund, the first half is showing good performance. So we'll continue to monitor those and watch that for the next few months when we set the, set the enterprise budgets in September and October.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Anybody have any questions regarding this law report? This is very thorough, I appreciate it. I'd like to hear a lot more about this issue.
Okay, thank you. If you do have any questions, you can always conduct me. Thank you.
This takes us on to, again, I am eight A N D L S U R Police Department Animal Control Agreement twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six or two thousand twenty-eight, six of three-year agreement, Mr. Robey?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. The L S P D has utilized the services of Minnesota Crater Gators for a number of years now. City has historically entered three-year agreements with Crater Gator. The current agreement terms at the end of twenty twenty-five. And our chief police has been in conversation with Crater Gators. They do provide a valuable service, the city was providing record maintenance, this is animal controls. We don't move animals and providing twenty-four hour facility, we do pay a retainer fee on a monthly basis. That's a similar contract that surrounding communities use with Minnesota Crater Gators. But my dealer, Greg, all use this similar contract as well. There are no material changes to the services that are provided in the new contract. The only material change is one hundred dollar per month increase in the retainer. The retain, which changed from thirteen hundred dollars a month to fourteen hundred dollars a month. States for like three-year contract, so the price has been thirteen hundred dollars a month since twenty twenty-three. Then we moved to fourteen dollars starting January of twenty twenty-six.
Over three years?
Yes.
Maybe we use that in China, it's a retainment.
Yeah, yeah, so they go as, they go as, we, we use it a fair amount. I'd be getting specific numbers to you, but it is a service that we, we can provide it in-house. Every once in a while, if Crater Gators can't go here because they are in another journey, we will call the dog and we're on a short period of time if they have to. Ideally, these folks would be very great for the PD to look at.
Thank you. I have a comment a few times in the past year or so. That is the one hundred dollar increase over the next three years, which I, I think I computed earlier today to be about two and a quarter per year, which is more than reasonable. At this time, if nobody has any questions, in motion, authorize the execution twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight, Animal Control Agreement with Minnesota Crater Gators. So, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, Councilmember. Seconded the motion, in the discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody oppose the ice habit? Next on to the S U R County, Minnesota Maintenance Agreement, Mr. Robey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the lead S U R County Highway Department submits to us a parity agreement for maintenance of the county state highways for what we refer to as the CASA system within city limits. So think of CASA twenty-two, CASA thirty-six, seven, Kingsway Ferry Bridge, South Main Street. The city and local cities in the county maintain those basic maintenance and remove all the snow for those CASA systems for the counties, the county can focus on its other areas and in return, they pay us a per mile fee. The mileage has not changed in the proposed agreement from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. The last material change would have been when we dropped from the fourth street off of the CASA system and took it back in house. The, the only material change is the decrease to the per mile rate, which is dropped about eighteen percent year to year. And that is solely based upon the change between twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four overall maintenance costs of the county, goes together all their maintenance costs for the previous year. They allocated that along the county road system and established a per mile maintenance. They allocate that along, um, the county road system and establish a per mile maintenance fee. So this is how much it costs them on average to provide all maintenance, uh, for, for the system. And that's the per mile rate that they, they pay us. So it's, it's not a negotiated dollar amount. Um, we provide the service, they will provide a lump sum to us. And we've had these disagreements annually for a number of years.
Thank you. Well, may I have any questions regarding, uh, this item? If not, I'm taking motion for the execution twenty twenty five Minnesota maintenance agreement with the sewer county highway department as presented. So, council member, I think council member Nelson seconded. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Hi. Anybody opposed the ice hammer? It takes on the reports and items of appreciation. Council members, this is your opportunity to share with the public, uh, what's going on with your commission, the tolls on our communities and assault waves. We will start. I'm good, Nelson, sir. Nothing, council member Nelson. Nothing, council member Schiller.
Couple items. First of all, the planning commission meeting on the park team. I do want to thank them for holding the public hearing on the park residences redevelopment project for their deliberations, discussions and for their recommendations to the city council. Although I attended a EBA meeting earlier tonight, let me send you a report.
Thank you. Council member Smith.
Um, yeah, I just want to remind the public that schools back in session, so please watch out for those little kiddos. Um, I had attended a planning commission meeting last Thursday and an HRA meeting last Wednesday. And I spent a week meeting with quite a few residents about the concerns for the city.
Thank you. Um, council member Sullivan, nothing tonight. Council member Williams.
Um, just had a meeting this morning and it was good to see some public showing up and giving their feedback. And appreciate the time that was spent by staff. Okay.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have nothing to share tonight, so with that I will entertain motion to dismiss this meeting. So moved. Thank you. All those in favor?